Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City of Kenmore Plan Commission meeting to order for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We have several things tonight, including a panel, which we're all looking forward to, and we'll talk about that in a little moment. So first is public comments for three minutes. Comment limit applies. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Please raise your hands. So Rita can put you on.
We, I see a couple of hands going up. I'm going to promote you to panelist, and then you can unmute your mic and start your comment. You will have three minutes. Looks like our first one is safe TV.
Hi, Stacy Valensuela, Kenmore. It is important to put forward the actions to keep our residents sheltered and lower the cost burden of our residents. We are already in desperate need. Then the pandemic hit. Many of our residents are on fixed income, currently out of work, on cut hours, or are one step away from homelessness. The cost of inflation is a huge burden on our most vulnerable. Many residents will be evicted in the upcoming months. The King County Affordable Housing Task Force reported in two thousand and nineteen projected that our county alone would need twenty-eight thousand additional low affordable housing units now. One hundred and fifty-six thousand in five years and two hundred and forty-four thousand in the next twenty years. By bonus and market rate units that Arch and most developers build sit empty for months. Others are filled temporarily, like much housing with tenants that are one bill, one injury, one paycheck from being evicted. And many times, four to five wage earners are sharing a one-bedroom apartment. Many minimum wage workers are living in tents at Camp Unity and many others reside in their cars. We keep hearing that no one should be living cost burden spending over thirty percent on their income on housing. Our city leader staff and developers need to support the density and rental rates to increase the desperately needed low income and extremely low affordable housing. We need you to support organizations that support and build real affordable housing in our community. We need you to require more of the developers to meet these needs and build at least twenty-five to thirty percent of their units at the very low and extremely low affordable housing rates, or thirty percent AMI to qualify for permits, incentives, and tax exemptions. We need you to apply for grant money and to support building the low and very low income housing units that these complexes or developments need. We need our leaders in Kenmore and developers to bring the creativeness forward, building very low and extremely low affordable housing units in our TOD area. Together, you can make a huge difference and make Kenmore's TOD the area of mixed affordable housing that we all can celebrate. Please come forward and do this. It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And now Rita, who would be our next person for a three-minute comment?
Next, we have John Hendrickson. If you give me just one moment, may I promote the panelist? There we go. John, you can go ahead and unmute, and when you begin to speak, I'll start your three minutes.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
You can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
All right. You know, I was on the council for eight years, and the only way I see housing working for the people that really need it is that we have to house them. But I think, you know, just like we have the boats down at the marina in Kenmore, where they can put them on a big forklift, and they can stack those boats five high. I think we need containers. They're making them down in California, housing units that you could and build a structure for them to go into. And the people would never have to move. If they need to go somewhere else, we can take the container out and move it to another spot that has the same facility, plug them in, and hook up the water, hook up the sewer, hook up the electric. How much does that cost compared to what we're doing now? What we're doing now, if you want to look at TOD and affordable housing at Kenmore Village, look at the history. We, the developer, wouldn't build unless we had affordable at a rate of eighty-five percent median income. That means the rate to qualify would be around eighteen hundred a month, two thousand a month. And the actual market rate was fourteen hundred. So there really was no affordable housing, but because they complied with that, we gave them a tax break for ten years of twelve million dollars. So, you know, you need to get real. You know, this country was really founded on, and is a great success story, because we were founded on principles of reason, scientific method, goodwill, human decency, honesty, and integrity. How are you gonna pay the workers that do all this work and make it that we can house all these people without having some kind of, you know, mass production like we have in the car industry? How can you do it? Look at what we're doing. Look at how much it costs. So, I mean, I sent you, I sent Debbie Bet a lumber summary report for the last twelve months. I'm hoping that you have it. Back in, I got it from Plywood Supply. It tells you how much it costs to build a twenty-seven hundred square foot home. Before COVID, it was around thirteen thousand in January, and we go, and it ended up going up in two thousand and twenty to twenty-eight thousand. If you remember in two thousand and twenty-one in May, Plywood Home Depot went from seventeen bucks up to ninety-five dollars. And you'll see in this report that I gave you guys that the cost for a twenty-seven hundred square foot house went up to forty-two, forty-three thousand. But by August, it was back down to under sixteen thousand. Where else are you gonna go in the world, and you can get the lumber for a twenty-seven hundred square foot home for fifteen thousand dollars? And how, so where can you go to get hardwood floors for three fifty to six bucks a foot? Oak hardwood floors with aluminum oxide coating?
Mr. Hendrickson.
Stoves, everything. How are you gonna make that work?
Thank you. That is your three-minute time.
Please deal with reality. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for coming tonight. And who's up next, Rita?
If you want to just give it a second, I don't see any other hands right now. So if anybody would like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. We'll give everybody just a second. I see Victoria Grayland. You give me just a moment. I will promote you to panelist. Ms. Grayland, you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I was recently made aware that the planning commission was considering a land acknowledgement. Not following the cities, city councils. If you look at the Duwamish tribe's website, they talk about land acknowledgement. And they say that what's most important is to be sincere. And I think that's really true. I don't think this city council's land acknowledgement, especially read by David Baker. It just, it never seems sincere to me. I've been collecting land acknowledgements from various educational institutes, institutions, and from various museums. I'd be happy to share them with you. Also, I'm on the board of a native organization here in Seattle called McConney. I can share our land acknowledgement and the collected land acknowledgements of our staff. And I'm also on an employee research resource group at AT&amp;T, the Intertribal Council of AT&amp;T Employees. And I have asked, reached out to our, our chair of that council and asked her for that land acknowledgement. I can share all of those with you if you have a loss of words. The words are very important, and you can you can look away at all these different things I've collected. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Victoria. And Rita, do we have anyone else with a raised hand?
I see no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, if someone just gets in the next couple, let's just let us know. Otherwise, we're gonna move on to the approval of minutes. Is there any discussion or objections to anything that's in the minutes of February first, two thousand and twenty-two? Hearing none, then we will adopt those minutes unless there's objection. Consider them adopted. So our next item is the TOD panel discussion. I'd like to recognize that the staff has done a great job of putting this together. And there are three attachments, the panelist questions, and they were given to us on time. Thank you very much, Lori and Debbie. And, and then there are the attachment twos, the TOD regulations, and then the TOD affordable housing regulations is, is, that are all of the three attachments. So I will, with no objection, I will give it to Lori and Debbie to introduce our panel. Thank you very much, each of panel members, for taking the time of your evening and away from your families to come and, and, and discuss the issues that are very important to us.
Great. So, good evening, Chair Thompson and members of the Planning Commission. Chair Thompson gave a good introduction to tonight's panel. But as we prepare to amend our TOD transit-oriented development regulations, we thought it would be a good idea to hear from proponents of TOD and get some perspectives that might make potential development more possible and eliminate roadblocks to that development. So the city adopted the TOD regulations in two thousand and fifteen, and we have not had a TOD project built in that time. It was created as what's called an overlay zone. In other words, it wasn't a required zoning. It was an optional zoning. So a person could choose to develop under the TOD rules, or they could choose to use the underlying zoning, which is ranges from multifamily to commercial. The TOD allows a much higher residential density, up to a hundred and fifty dwelling units per acre. But it also comes with affordable housing requirements. Up to ten percent of the units must be affordable to lower-income individuals. With the arrival of Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, in two thousand and twenty-six, it seemed an appropriate time to look at the TOD rules, particularly since we were looking at the land use element of the comprehensive plan, the land use chapter. And so we hope that tonight's panel will give you some insights into those who have tried or who are interested in trying to do TOD in Kenmore. So I'm going to introduce the panelists just by name and organization, and then the very first question we're going to ask them. They'll be able to provide more detail about their background and why they are interested in TOD in Kenmore. And so the panelists are Juan Coliff with Sound Transit, Jenkins Chan with JK Chan Development, now also with Sue Development, Alan Doderman with TWG Development, Sarah Lovell with King County Metro, and Kevin Merriman with Main Street Property Group. We may have another panelist, Imad Baba from IHB Architects, joining us. But I am not certain that he will be able to be here this evening. So the format of tonight, and you all have the questions. And so we anticipate, some of the questions are around Robin, where we'll ask all panelists. Others will ask panelists just to contribute if they wish to, and we anticipate that it might take about an hour and a half to go through the eight questions. Given that, then we would turn to the Planning Commission for questions and follow-up discussion. Members of the audience at this point won't be able to participate, asking questions or contributing to the discussion. If there are folks who wish to comment, you can either submit your comments to the Planning Commission in care of Rita Moreno and her name and email address are on tonight's agenda. Or you can come to the Planning Commission meeting on March first at seven o'clock and speak under public comment. Anyway, we welcome your input as well. So with that, I am going to start with the first question. This is a round robin question, and we'll just go alphabetically first time around. So the first question is, why don't you tell us about your background and experience with TOD, especially in Kenmore? You can introduce yourself. So Juan. Oh, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Juan, while you work on that, why don't I ask Jenkins? And by the way, I've asked all panelists if I can call them by their first names, and they all agreed, so.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, so I've always been actually a single-family development as my primary career, residential development. But only recently I have transitioned to multifamily with Sue Development, with some high-rise towers that we developed, built in Seattle and Bellevue. But with my, with JK Chan Development, it was my own firm. I started in two thousand and seventeen. And so I specifically had a parcel I had purchased right on the city border with Bothell on Eighty-third and ended up developing as a twelve-inch townhome. But for the first year, we actually, actually delayed construction and started construction despite having permit approval to look at a potential sixty-unit apartment building using the TOD overlay. So we looked at that, and it just didn't quite work from, from several perspectives, mostly market perspectives at that point. But I really enjoyed working with the city of Kenmore and really dove deep on TOD development there right at that.
Great, thank you. Alan, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Thompson and Commissioners. My name's Alan Doderman. I work with TWG Development. We are a national for-profit affordable housing developer. And we have two projects that are currently under construction, one in Shoreline. It's about two hundred and fifty units. And it's considered TOD. And then there's one in Totem Lake that is about a hundred and twenty-five units. And they're all a hundred percent affordable housing buildings. I, my experience in Kenmore with TOD is mainly looking at properties. There, there are a few properties that we did look at that were either for sale or for lease that we were interested in in developing. And, and I should say that when I was doing that, I was actually with Imagine Housing. They're an eastside nonprofit affordable housing developer. And we were, we were interested in the Kenmore area. And even with my transition to TWG, I'm still very interested in the, in the TOD area of Kenmore with the affordable housing incentives that are in the TOD area and the ability to, to maximize affordable housing and minimize parking within that, in, in that overlay.
Great. Sarah, do you want to go ahead?
Sorry, all. Hi, I'm Sarah Lovell. I'm King County Metro's Transit-Oriented Development Manager. And I have been doing TOD for Metro now for three years. Before that, I was the Transit-Oriented Development Program Manager at Sound Transit. And I also worked a long time ago doing some land economics for a little transit-oriented development specialty firm in the Bay Area. So I've been doing it from a bunch of different perspectives and mostly from the public side for a while. And most recently, since being in Metro, it's been fun, because I've spent a lot of time over the last three years thinking about transit-oriented development at Kenmore, at the Kenmore Park and Ride as a part of Sound Transit's BRT project that's located on Metro's park and ride lot. So spent a lot of time working with Kenmore staff and Sound Transit staff, thinking about how best to incent transit-oriented development on that site.
Great. Kevin?
Thank you. I'm with Main Street Property Group, a real estate development company, primary focus in transformative residential retail and mixed-use property, primarily in the east side of Seattle. Our goal in everything we do is to form lasting relationships with each community, their visions, and turning them into reality. We're proud of our partnerships we've had with a lot of really great eastside downtown cores, including Kenmore, Kirkland, Bothell, Sammamish, and Woodinville. Main Street Property Group has a great history with City of Kenmore, having partnered with the city on a number of development projects over the last ten years. We're very proud of the work we've done in the Kenmore Village project, including the Seaplane Kitchen and Bar, Spencer Sixty-Eight Residential Development, Link Lofts, Flyaway Apartments. Overall, having developed three hundred and forty-plus homes and over forty thousand square foot of commercial space, we've had a great partnership with the city of Kenmore. And from the beginning, we understood and embraced the values of the community, creating great places and spaces that are walkable and special. So we hope to do more development in the city of Kenmore, and so we really look forward to the TOD and what we can do to, to help. So thank you again.
Juan?
Yeah. Hi, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just switched the phone. I'm sorry for that. Yeah, my name is Juan. Thanks for having me on the panel. I'm a senior land use planner with the Office of Land Use Planning and Development from Sound Transit. And we, we started about three years ago, working on stationary planning work with the city of Kenmore and King County Metro and other stakeholders to develop a coordinated development plan with a vision around the Kenmore Park and Ride that included some of the parking needs that we, that we have for the BRT stride, which is already entering its sixty percent design. And now, at this point, we're, we're also in, in the partnership with, with King County and Kenmore, and it really represents an innovative opportunity to explore what TOD could look like at this site. And some of the initial studies that we looked at for the, for the planned area included upwards of four hundred units mix of affordable market rate. So there's, there's a lot of interesting innovative things happening, and it, it could be a face project in the future, possible, but definitely reflective of a mixed-use TOD environment of the kind that I think the city wants to see. And it was interesting to hear that, you know, some of the, some of the all questions that we, that we, that we will be talking about today in terms of how this could be a great opportunity for a region of the city that, that could see this kind of work. So anyways, happy to be here and contribute into this conversation.
Right. And our sixth panelist, Imad Baba, is here. Yay, perfect timing. We're starting with the very first question, which is to introduce yourself and talk about your background and your experience or interest in TOD in Kenmore. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry for being late.
It's good time.
Thank you. I'm the owner and principal of IHB Architects, and we're in Kent, Washington. I've been, I've had my own practice for sixteen years, and I've been in the industry for many more years than that. We're a small firm. However, we've developed a a rapport with many developers in the Puget Sound region, and we've had lots of repeat clients doing private development. And we've become, fortunately, we've got a niche in the mixed-use arena. And we've done, we've been involved in several TOD projects. First, I'll start by saying I'm currently the chair of the TOD Advisory Group for the city of Tacoma. And we, we review and present our considerations for all things TOD to the council and planning commission and transportation commission at the city of Tacoma. That's been a privilege for me the last couple of years, and we're gonna extend that for one more year. We have been involved in a TOD project at, in Kent, at South Two Seventy-Second, near the Sound Transit Future Light Rail Station there. It's a park and ride. It's called Star Lake. And we're, we're involved in the, an adjacent property there. That's TOD. We've been doing some preliminary planning and design work on that site. We have a TOD project in downtown Tacoma that is just broken ground. It's been the news recently. It's right in the Freight House Square District, in the Tacoma Dome District, where, again, another light rail station is, is being planned. We are doing, we did a TOD project in Des Moines, High Line Place, which was Phase One student housing, again, across the street from a, the new rail station there in Kent, Des Moines. And Phase Two is a mixed-use market rate project, not student housing, and that's on the same site. And then, lastly, we've been working on this site in Kenmore for a local developer that we first attempted to do a large one-hundred-unit mixed-use project there with some townhomes adjacent. But then when COVID hit, they unfortunately decided to change their program and scope to more of a townhouse project. So we ended up with about, I want to say thirty, thirty-some odd units of townhomes instead. So that's a little bit about me, and I look forward to hearing what you all have to say and, and going through the questions tonight.
Great. Well, again, thank you to all of you for joining us. We have a wealth of experience and expertise here. And with that, I'm gonna jump right into our first TOD-related question. This is kind of a lightning round, so maybe a minute or so in response. But the question is, is the market ready for TOD in Kenmore? And if not, why not? And how do you tell when a market is ready? So maybe I'll start with Kevin.
Sure. We believe the market in Kenmore is ready for TOD. We see the migration out of traditional urban areas, and we're seeing an increased demand in some traditionally suburban markets. And one's kind of centered around transit and mass transit and kind of rapid transit. So we kind of saw it with Redmond years back. We think with the link light rail extension into Linwood and the proposed and under design SR five-twenty-two Bus Rapid Transit program that we've been talking about to connect Kenmore and the surrounding communities, that this is gonna be, make Kenmore a desirable location for TOD development. And I think kind of a sign that the market is ready.
Great. Sarah?
Thanks. Yeah, no, I think the market in Kenmore is ready. We, Juan will probably say something similar. As part of the, the BRT project and the TOD visioning, there was a market study conducted in two thousand and nineteen. And it did prove out that the market appeared to be ready, that TOD-style development was feasible. And so while the market has definitely been in sort of a, an uncertain place due to COVID, it certainly was there before. And, you know, we would expect that it would either still be there or be there shortly. Whenever we get back to a place where we can all see each other in person. So I, I think, yes. And in terms of what kind of indicators we look for in terms of considering whether the market's ready, I mean, obviously, we start looking at things like, you know, plant, projects and planning permits and, and sort of cost per square foot based on appraisal and things like that. But also looking at the transit usage at the park and ride, for example, which was like very, very high before. I mean, it was over a hundred percent, and Metro was leasing property other places. Clearly, there was demand to be in that location. And, and so for all of those reasons, I mean, at the time, too, there was, that the market study was done, there was sort of a scan of surrounding communities and demand that they were seeing through new projects in places like Bothell and Kenmore and Woodinville. And, you know, that was sort of a consistent picture. So I'd say yes, and hopefully, yes, still.
Alan? How about you?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, we've been interested in Kenmore, you know, as in specifically the TOD area for a hundred percent affordable housing projects for quite a few years. I, I must say, though, that, you know, there's, there's a, a lot of demand and high expectations for affordable housing in Kenmore that I've heard from, from a lot of comments, but unfortunately. But unfortunately, the last census kind of changed the funding makeup for 100% affordable housing in Kenmore. There's, Kenmore used to be in what's called a difficult-to-develop area, and that was an area that was designated by HUD, and that allowed for an additional funding boost that would really help bring affordable housing into a city. But Kenmore is no longer in that difficult-to-develop area. HUD has taken away that criteria or that classification, which makes it a lot more difficult for an affordable housing developer to build something that's 100% affordable housing in Kenmore. We're still interested, and, you know, if we can find the right site and find the right funding to make up the difference from, you know, that boost that you would get, we would still develop there.
Jenkins.
Yeah, maybe I'd take a little bit of a contrary stand. I think the aspiration is that Kenmore would be ready, especially as, you know, it's got a pretty unique location, being the halfway point between the East Side and Seattle. So it seems like a natural place for the TOD, especially 522 right off there, to be able to access both sides of the lake. So I think for that, the market is ready. But in regards to, you know, fewer parking or less parking regulate or less parking, kind of this reliance on the TOD itself, on the transit oriented, I don't know if it's quite there, just from my perspective as finding renters and people who want to be there without cars. But at the same time, I think if you wait till everybody's going to be ready, it's going to be too late to develop. So in that case, it is, you know, we got to start making moves, making it clear.
You are muted. Lori.
Juan, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, I guess everybody has thought a little bit of what I was thinking, but the market study that was conducted by Arkansas then, back when we started, the stationary planning work were pretty specific in the products that were ready during the time that the market study was conducted, and namely apartments was definitely a strong market at the time that was being conducted. That was pre-pandemic, and things have changed a little bit since then. But there was already an indication that office was not as strong, and that the retail would be the kind of retail that requires parking availability and not so much the ground-related retail market. So I think it is an area that's very much in transition. The park and ride data that we're getting from partner, partner agencies, it looks like the usages are currently down from where they used to be. I mean, this park and ride, for example, was at capacity in the 2019 numbers, and it's come down to maybe about half. So I think another thing to look at is what Alan was saying, that the capacity for 100% affordable housing, affordable housing projects that are not mixed income, maybe has changed a little bit in function of how the funding environment has changed. So that's something to be looked at more deeper. So I think if that could be better understood in the future, that would be really helpful for this area.
Iman.
Well, I have to start by saying, unfortunately, I'm not too familiar with the Kenmore area. This is our first project there. However, it appears that there's a recent, there's a density buildup. There's the current zoning and planning background efforts are there and in place. Transportation modes are adjacent and being built up. And so also, from your city's community and economic development director pushing for the TOD project there, it just feels like there's definitely synergy and that it is ready. The affordable housing component, I think, is vital in almost every jurisdiction right now. At least attempting a 20% affordable housing element is, I think, critical to meet the need. And so that's where I stand on that.
Great. Okay, moving on to our next question. This is another round robin question. And if you are thinking about Kenmore's TOD development standards, and you all receive copies of those, is there an obstacle to TOD development that immediately comes to mind? We're going to talk more in depth about all of the standards, but if there was one, two, that immediately rose to the top of your mind, if we could just go around and you could let us know what that is. Jenkins, we'll start with you.
Yeah, mine's maybe not as related to the directly in the development standards, but I think the biggest obstacle that is the size of the parcels. And so you have a lot of small parcels there that, in order to really take advantage of TOD development, you're going to have to start doing some assemblages. And so what's, I think, a big obstacle is that process of getting enough parcels onboard to have an assemblage large enough to make a TOD development worthwhile. So I don't necessarily think it's anything zoning itself.
Great. Sarah.
So I think there's not one huge, you know, there's not one red flag per se. I think we've talked a little bit about how, you know, Kenmore is an area of transition, and there's still maybe a necessity for a car, but the parking requirements, being that there are minimums rather than maximums, things like that, like those start to sort of point cost of projects in a, you know, in a higher spot. And it definitely is a tension in thinking about how to basically bring to the market a project that usually is sort of thought of as one where there are, you know, high-quality design and lots of sort of big-ticket items that are associated with projects that you will think of as TOD. Having a more significant parking requirement still is tricky. There are other things, but that's probably the one thing.
Alan.
I think the one thing is parking. I mean, that's always a challenge on projects in jurisdictions or municipalities that have a little bit higher parking expectations than maybe others with TOD areas where they allow parking to be based on actual car ownership or usage. City of Kirkland is an example of that, where we can get parking modifications from the code when we do a parking study showing what the actual parking demand is based on usage for similar affordable housing projects. And being able to apply that can help a great deal with keeping, you know, the total development cost down for an affordable housing project. And if there was, if you had that ability in Kenmore, that could help quite a bit. I did, you know, I have looked at three large enough properties in Kenmore, and with each one of them, parking did kind of become one of those thresholds where it would make the project potentially too expensive to be competitive for the public funding that we would need. And having the ability to just shave off a little bit to where you're providing parking based on known data of car ownership would help quite a bit.
Iman.
Yes. Well, I'm not sure. I think one, I'm not sure it's a zoning element that is an obstacle, but the one thing that I'm reading down here is the 10% affordable housing cap. We can talk about that later as it comes up, but I think it needs to be higher, like 20%. Again, because we're so lacking in that piece of the housing sector, that I think it needs to be increased. I would second what Alan said about parking. It's always a challenge. And having that as low as possible in a TOD district is a benefit and enticement to most developers. They're always wanting to reduce parking as much as possible because of the cost, especially if it's a podium project with the concrete structure. So I think those are a couple of the obstacles that I'm noticing.
Okay. Juan.
Yeah, I think everybody, I echo a lot of what I'm hearing, but I think to add, maybe, on the parking reduction, I feel like it could be a case where, like, the closer you are to the transit walk, five-minute walk shot, could be striving for parking maximums rather than minimums. So kind of doing it that way, but also maybe like the incentive structure of how developers can start building higher is not clear. It is clear that you guys want density from what the code language has, but it's not clear if you want bonus. You know, some other jurisdictions provide incentives for extra bonus floors and things like that. And so the height limit, I think it's right now 65 feet. And I know we might talk about that later, but how do you change that perhaps to floors that could be above the podium level? And as Iman was mentioning. And then there's also some other things in the, I think, in the district that are, there's this natural elements like the wetlands and things like that that start, I guess, encroaching, if you will, into a multiple parcels. And those parcels are going to be affected by that natural feature. So how does that either get played into the requirements or not is an interesting thing. And I think there is a piece about the tree grove retention requirements that maybe he's trying to tackle some of that or tie into that. But it'd be interesting to understand how the structure really incentivizes the development you guys want to see in specific locations, in specific parcel areas. So that is kind of a way to see it right now from the obstacle perspective. But yeah, parking is a huge one, and affordable housing and the natural requirements as well.
Lori, can I interrupt for a second?
Okay, all right. Go ahead, and then we'll let Kevin go.
Sorry, I just wanted to say one more thing that I missed on my list is the multifamily tax exemption allowance. That needs to be clearly stated for TOD projects, because, again, developers are seeking that all the time. And I think there's usually an eight-year or 12-year MFTE. So those just need to be clear in all TOD zones. That's my two cents worth on that piece.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin, finish off the question.
Here we go. Yeah, we see the development standards less as obstacles, but opportunities to kind of make location-specific adjustments to help entice development in this area. And I think these are going to be a lot of what we talk about tonight. But they're targeted areas that I think many other cities' TOD standards have been embraced and have been successful. And I think with the risk of sounding like a broken record, parking height, and I think tree retention would be kind of at the top of the list as things that, you know, we could spend a little time on and discuss and kind of work on. So I know that everybody has already talked about that, and I second, third, and fourth that.
Okay, great. Well, that's a good lead in to the next question, which is about the development standards. And do any of these standards make developing more difficult? And the first one, we have a whole list, and this is anybody who wants to jump in, just raise your hand or unmute yourself. Debbie is going to help make sure that I catch everybody who wants to speak. But the first question is height limitation, which is 65 feet. Is, I've heard from a couple of you already, that that's a potential issue.
I'd like to comment if that's all right. You can just jump in. Okay. Yeah, for affordable housing, of course, you know, in that lens, especially in Kenmore, the most we would build is seven floors. And having the ability to build seven floors within a height limit where you can have 10-foot floor-to-floor height is what we would seek. Going any taller than that is just too expensive for affordable housing.
Others? Any comments?
Yeah, if I can step in here as well. In total agreement with Alan, I'd agree that, you know, we'd be looking to increase that height limit to try and minimize any below-grade parking and bring that out of there. I think there's some, you know, potential high-water tables in the areas and some of the areas in the TOD districts. So to stay out of that water table, I think, would be helpful for the feasibility of a lot of these projects or potential projects.
Okay. I see Iman has his hand up.
Sure. I'd like to say that, you know, most five-over-two podium projects are limited by the IBC, the building code, and 75 feet is sort of the max for this type of construction. I think you need to be at least there. And there are jurisdictions that offer, you know, 25% increase in their height limitation. Kent does that, and others do as well, or there's some bonus incentives where you, whatever you do with the roof structure or step backs or setbacks can also increase the height. But I think we need to target at least 75 feet to get that maximum podium-level project working.
Any other comments on height, or we'll start talking about density?
I think Sarah has a hand up, Lori.
Okay. Oh, there it is, the little yellow hand.
Sorry, I know. I would just echo what everybody said. And I think Kevin's point about the high-water table, given the wetlands that has, you know, been talked about a little bit, is a real consideration here. But also, while I agree with everybody who said you're not going to go really above 75 feet, I think allowing up to 85, like, no one's going to go to steel, I don't think, at this point, right? But allowing the flexibility to figure out how to sort of maximize your building envelope and having a little bit of flexibility about how to handle parking would be really beneficial.
Okay. So the next development standard has to do with minimum density. So if you want to build in the TOD, you have to build at least 60 dwelling units per acre. Any reactions to that? Okay, well, that was easy. Maximum density, you can develop up to 150 dwelling units per acre. I see Alan.
I think if you're going to entertain increasing building height, that you need to be able to increase your dwelling units per acre. Because the few studies that I did, I found that six stories with a normal mix of units, you are reaching that 150 units per acre limit. So adding another floor, you just, you know, there's no point in adding another floor if you're already at your 150.
And someone else said, Juan, was it you? Yeah, Juan.
Yeah, well, and I'm obviously not coming from the developer's perspective, more from the planning, but used to seeing in other codes and other partner jurisdictions that they handle more of an FAR max structure, right, floor ratios, rather than the maximum of a sub-number of dwelling units. So I think, and, you know, it seems like having that magic number. It's also, there's a variety of sizes of parcel sizes. And in some cases, developers will be able to assemble parcels together to get all of a sudden a three-acre size, five-acre. And that number is going to start growing. So maybe the max number of units is not very really desired, but the form around that that wants to be maintained in terms of floors and building heights. So just mentioning that.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, yeah.
Can I, I would just like to comment on what, what Juan was saying and, and being a former planning commission chair and going through this exercise a few years ago, you know, we had that same question in our city is do we go to FAR? Or do we go with, you know, dwelling units per, per acre? And we found that you have to make sure that your FAR actually is, is realistic with the dwelling units per acre that you're, you're trying to substitute. You know, you don't want, you don't want to have an FAR of five point O because you're never going to get that with your building height. And so you, you really need to study to make sure that, that the FAR is a good match with your building height and, and expected, I guess, coverage, lot coverage.
Mad, you had your.
Sarah has her hand up too.
Okay. Well, Imad, why don't you go ahead? I saw your hand first and then we'll go to Sarah.
Okay, I agree that the, 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 the density, maximum density probably doesn't want to be limited to a number of units because the mix is always different, depending on what the goal is of the development. I think that, so, so what, what Alan said I think is correct. The FAR needs to be either included as part of a, a variable height. Some jurisdictions do that, or the taller the building, the, the, the higher the FAR becomes. And that needs to be coordinated. And so I think it's important to, and then coverage is also can, can determine density like sixty percent or seventy percent of the site area coverage is usually what it's set at. All those things I think need to be played in or considered instead of a maximum density.
Sarah.
I am just echoing what everybody said about FAR. I think it's a little bit more, I think it's a little bit more flexible tool. I think it would be a better way to accomplish the kind of physical form that I think Kenmore is seeking and it gives a little bit of flexibility. So you're not sharpening your pencil to try to figure out what size your units have to be and how to maximize or minimize, you know, I think, I think FAR is probably a better tool, but like Alan said, it definitely is something that has to be right sized. So.
Okay, the next development standard to talk about is parking requirements. We've already heard a lot about that. Are there additional comments?
What about the affordable housing requirements? You skipped over that.
Oh, did I? Oh, I did. Okay. You're following along more closely than me.
Well, I.
Housing requirement.
I, I actually had a specific question to that. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. Is, is this saying that you can't have an a hundred percent affordable housing project in the TOD?
No, it's the requirement is capped at ten percent. So you have to provide at least ten percent, but you certainly can do more.
Okay. Great.
So.
I didn't have any other comments on that.
Okay, how about others? Comments on the affordable housing requirement?
Juan has his hand up and so does Sarah.
Okay, Juan.
Um, yeah, just really quickly, I, I think Imad or somebody earlier said that, you know, the, the inclusionary can be boosted up to perhaps something higher, like more, more aggressive to like twenty percent, maybe match something like that, an MFT type of goal. But also there, there are some, there is some language that it was hard for me to read in the code that talks about the, the tier one, tier two and tier three of affordability. And as you go into those tiers, there's more math for the developers to perform. And they, they tended to be a little bit confusing. And I was trying to understand the goal, but it, but it in essence, the, the affordable housing that's, that's required or, or yeah, required to get the bonus density units is not that much as, as it, as it turns out in the very low income category. So maybe in a way, like maybe having whatever program is set to be or the goal to have a more sizable projects that have the, the very low income or whether it's an in lieu that goes into a, a specific very low income bucket. I'm, I'm coming up with stuff right now, but it seems like it's almost like it wants to be more sizable when those opportunities happen. And that's it. I'll stop there.
Sarah.
Um, I was just going to say that I think, I was also going to say the tiers, I had to read them a few times and I was doing some math. And I think, I think they're very, it's clear that, you know, the Kenmore is really interested in, in getting a lot of affordable housing produced by the private market, that there is an interest in making sure that what's provided, you know, meets the needs of households at a variety of income levels. And so I felt like the intention behind it is clear. But whenever, and I forgive me all the folks that are in this call that are developers, I always think that like, as I'm thinking about how I'm writing an RFP or something, the more straightforward the requirement, easier it is to like back of the napkin, the more likely I feel like it is for people to actually respond and, and to push people into doing more. So it just, it felt like to Juan's point, maybe you could actually be more aggressive with your inclusionary requirement if it was a little bit more straightforward and easier to understand. But maybe hear from developers, they might feel differently. That was just my impression.
Kevin, do you want to speak to us? Looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, I would just say as a minimum requirement, I think ten percent gives you the opportunity, especially if you want to encourage development in the area. It gives you that wide range of you could go a hundred percent affordable. You could also go ninety and ten. So I think as you guys are, are kind of doing this to say, we want TOD development or we want this to be something that people, you know, an area that TOD development has, is successful at giving the most flexibility is something that's probably going to be important so that you can attract as many projects or as many developers or developments that you can.
Great. And I might just comment, we, I think at the staff level also agree that the tier one, tier two, tier three approach is, is confusing and we hope to clarify that as part of the amendments. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the city council has recently talked about affordability in the TOD and, and they, their initial comments were that maybe a twenty-five percent affordable housing requirement would be appropriate, at least for some interim regulations. So I throw that out as well. And someone, I think Jenkins, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I think the, like, like Kevin was saying, I think the flexibility is, is a good thing in order to get projects in the door, actually start the TOD off. But at the same time, if you leave it so flexible, then by the time more progress, projects are coming on, maybe, maybe all of them are at the, you know, just the ten percent affordable level without the deep affordability that the region might be looking for. And so this might be, maybe it's a possible tie in with the pioneer project incentives where, you know, the first projects that are coming into this TOD have an opportunity to maybe less affordable housing, but at least you get a, you know, five over two, six over two projects being built instead of townhomes. And then later on, as that that flexibility is kind of used up, now you get into the projects that are coming online in a couple of years, two, three years where there is a more stringent affordability requirement. And, and that gives the kind of the lost leader, the first projects going incentive to get in the door, get development going, but also gives Kenmore the ability then later on, say, no, we need more affordable units than just ten percent of the moderate income. So, so combining those two incentives would maybe gets more starts, but then also Kenmore the ability to deal with more stringent on fulfilling the needs of the affordable.
Right. Any other comments on the affordable housing requirement? Okay, now we'll go to parking. Any additional comments on parking?
Yeah, so maybe it's a, I don't know, maybe it's just food for thought. So I know everybody from a cost perspective, obviously wants less, less parking requirements. I, I still think of it as maybe I'm, maybe I'm a few years too behind the times, but I do think of it as, you know, my, my project I developed in Kenmore, I ended up needing this, we're not needing, but I ended up selling it to another home builder. And you know, the biggest issue I had, the biggest complaint is that I didn't provide enough parking, right? And so I, I just struggle with the balance of, yes, there's a cost upfront for parking, especially with larger projects. But at the same time, the, the market to, to get your tenants or homeowners into the, into the door, you know, they're still requiring parking all around, even, even the projects up, we have a couple of projects up on Capitol Hill in Seattle. You know, we still are looking at a market that wants parking. And so I, I always struggle with that balance. And I get the aspirational, we want to be a carless society. I love that. I would love to be, you know, buses and light rail everywhere. But I don't know if we're there yet, especially, you know, still on the fringes of the suburbs here. So I just wanted to put that.
Juan, I think you have your hand up.
Yeah, I think that, that's a great point that, you know, at the end of the day, there, there has to be cars to, to provide that option for, for a lot of the residents and, and different jurisdictions, but, you know, taking also advantage of the opportunity that there, there are the parking rides and other places that might have, in other words, surplus parking that could be shared amongst users. I think it's an opportunity that's being explored in other jurisdictions as well. And that might be something that the TOD overlay can explore and how, how sharing parking across uses can also reduce the overall need and, and based on a demand, parking demand analysis model, rather than, than just, just as they share. So I think that's something we, we always, we always try to think of, think of as we're looking at plans in jurisdictions. So.
Hey, Kevin.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I think some flexibility in the parking requirements could be, you know, a good, a good way to go about this, especially in the TOD zone where I think the nature is, you know, transit oriented design and encouraging the use of the transit in the area. And I think to Jenkins' point, if you're building these big projects, it's, it's, you know, on the developer or whoever the owner, whoever's building it to understand the market. And if there is a need to have one-to-one parking, then, you know, if you want your development to be successful and it to be able to get rented up, you're going to, you're going to have to make adjustments. But I think there's also flexibility if you say the market, you know, especially near these transit stops, doesn't need as much parking, that you could do less parking and maybe that gives you more density. And so that's, I think, something to think about as far as flexibility and maybe making the requirements a little less stringent. So it gives people the opportunity.
Sarah.
Yeah, thank you. I think that, so, you know, as, as someone that has been doing TOD sort of exclusively for a long time, obviously I'm in the less parking camp, but, but I, I do totally hear what Jenkins is saying. And it is a reality that in lots of communities, we're not quite there yet. We don't have quite the, you know, it's not, not quite enough transit service to really be carless. And so we're sort of on this continuum of trying to get there and we're talking about regulations that hopefully will have some longevity. But I am also just going to say that I do think that having flexibility in the code so that you can have parking requirements based on demand would be a really sort of a nice in the middle. And the other thing that I have been sort of noodling on a little bit is whether there's an opportunity, when you think about parking requirements, to tie those to other mobility improvements. Cause one thing I do notice in the code is that there are also requirements for, you know, a lot of pedestrian infrastructure associated with these projects. And when you really think about like a transit oriented development project holistically, it's really about, you know, having great access to lots of amenities, including maybe most importantly transit, but also lots of other things. And so I wondered if in thinking or designing a more flexible requirement around parking, you could also link it to other modes of, you know, other mobility modes and whether there's some improvement, you know, on bike paths or on pedestrian paths, and you can count some of those improvements towards this requirement or something like that. I mean, think about that a little bit, but, but I, I do like, all of these things cost, you know, have a cost associated with them. And as, as communities like Kenmore are going to be receiving more transit and becoming more dense, I think there's that opportunity.
Jenkins.
Yeah, actually I just, I wanted to respond. Actually, I think Juan said, you know, looking at opportunities to maybe cross use different parcels. And, you know, when I think about Kenmore's TOD over, or the district as it currently stands, I just don't think if, if every developer went in there and provided a minimal amount of parking, there, there aren't very many options for guests to come, right? And so there isn't a whole plethora of streets that you can currently park on. So the, the, we'd almost be overwhelmed, I think, with people who are in cars coming in. And so that was, I think, a lot of my concern too, isn't just the permanent residents or the commercial businesses that need their parking. But ultimately, if there isn't enough parking, there aren't options in Kenmore, like there might be in other suburbs. Cause nobody's parking on five twenty-two and then Safeway parking lot, right? So, but what, what Juan was saying was maybe more applicable then is if there can be some, some research into incentivizing cross use. Hey, this one is, this area can be more used for some surface parking. And I hate surface parking. So I see that very lightly, but just something where there's some brainstorming around, what are the options if, if we do reduce the parking?
Imad.
I'm in the same boat as Jenkins on this one where, you know, there's, there needs to be a balance. I hear all, all the time that are the developers, my developer clients want less parking so they can increase their units, number of units. However, the planners and city councils want more parking because there's always a high demand. And people don't complain that there aren't enough, there isn't enough parking. So there is really, it, it's really a dichotomy, I think. And I'm, I agree with what Jenkins has been saying. There needs to be some kind of balance. And maybe there's some new incentives, like one idea is to offer orca cards to the residents that if you, if you want to reduce parking, then you have to offer orca cards in some manner to the residents. Or shared parking, as some people have been already speaking of Juan and Jenkins. And it has to be demand based and has to be based on a market research in that demographic. So it has to be, you know, localized. It can't just be broad based. So I think all of those things are, need to be considered. But the balancing act is, is really a tough one. In an emergencing, in, sorry, in an emerging urban market like Kenmore, again, it's on the fringe, but you just have to be careful not to ask for too much or too little parking at, at this time and just consider some of those incentives.
Alan.
Yeah, I, I just would like to comment on our experience with other cities, east side cities. You know, when, when we do request parking density reductions, usually it's accompanied with a parking study. And that parking study does demonstrate that there is not the need to have as much parking as what the city is requiring. And then a lot of times in order to, you know, to be able to proceed with the reduced parking, we, we have to enter into a parking management plan to make sure that we're not, you know, our projects are not burdening adjacent properties with people that, you know, that live in the units or live in the building, but there's no room for them to park. And so those are two key components that, that we face all the time with, you know, with reduced parking densities. And I have to kind of comment on, you know, one project that we did recently about, actually about four years ago, we did a parking study where there was a, a parking right next door to a project. And the parking study, the analysis that was done revealed that the market rate building, even though they Even though they charged, they charged for parking. They, they didn't fill all the parking stalls. So not all the parking stalls were rented out because they were next to a parking ride. Because everybody was parking at the parking ride, so they didn't have to pay for parking. So that's kind of, you know. People find ways to, to avoid, you know, having to pay for parking and they'll use the most convenient way, like parking down the street or parking in a parking ride. That's all my comments.
Okay. Well, I don't see any other hands raised, so I'll move to the last set of development standards, which have to do with design. Any comments on the design standards that are part of the T O D? Go ahead, Alan.
Okay. Yeah, I had a few here that, that I just wanted to bring up. One of them is, is upper level setbacks. And, and I, if I remember correctly. In Kenmore, you really only need to have an, an upper level setback at the street side or the street front face. But with affordable housing, you know, you, you're, you're trying to maximize the number of units on property and, and having that setback, you know. Doesn't help maximize it, especially if you have to have setbacks on more than one side. And it's fine, I mean, we can get around it pretty easily if the setback occurs above the podium. And then there's no additional setbacks as you go up the building. But every time you set back from the face of the building, it just adds to the cost and it also reduces. The, basically the living space of the units, because you, you, you have to stack your corridors, you have to stack everything. And when you set, if you're up at the sixth floor or fifth floor and you got to set back another six feet, you have to take it out of the living space. And we, we just don't like to have reduced living spaces, just trying to accommodate a design standard that. You know, I, I understand, you know, the purposes of setbacks, but sometimes they just kind of defeat the purpose of, of. You know, what you're trying to accomplish with affordable housing. And then the other thing is, is commercial space requirements. Especially if their really owners are excessive. And, and I, I don't think that, I don't remember exactly what Kenmore's. Commercial, you know, space requirements are on certain streets. But if they're more than, you know, more than 5% of the total of the, you know, the total building or, 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 or at least the footprint. It just becomes too excessive and it's, it's really hard for an affordable housing developer to. To find a partner to either own that space or, or to be in a position to, you know, have to lease that space out. It, it just creates too much cost, too much risk for the project to have that in there. So if there's the flexibility to be able to. Use community space for that specific resident building. As, as a substitute for commercial space, that would be our preference and that would, you know, that would help make the. Just, just eliminate risks out of the, out of the project.
Okay, Iman?
I think the commercial space. Standard, I, I agree with, with everything Alan said, that it does need to be limited, especially with this. I guess, new, new market that we have after COVID. Where commercial space is difficult to lease and people are mostly working from home. There's sort of a new era and I, I think cities haven't adjusted yet. But it, I think it needs to happen and 5% is really, I think, the, the limit, five to 10 max. We like 5% better, but I totally agree with that, or it's a deterrent to developers, I have to say. Also, open space requirements need to be reasonable. One jurisdiction we're working with is, you know, set on. This huge open space requirement and offering no fee in lieu. I think you have to offer a fee in lieu if you can't achieve it because. Density in an urban setting, you can't have a lot of open space. So it just needs to be strongly considered.
Sarah?
No, I was just thinking as, as Iman was talking about the green space requirement, that maybe I'm jumping ahead to a different question, so I can hold my comment till we get back to other amendments.
Okay, well, the next question actually. Has to do with the incentives and, and really the question was, there are a number of incentives in the regulations. A tree grove incentive allows more units and potentially more parking if there's a certain type of tree retention. We've talked briefly about the Pioneer Project bonus where you get, you have less parking requirement for the first hundred units. And also, we've acknowledged that the M F T E program overlays the T O D area, so that. Incentive is available. Are there generally any comments about the incentives?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's been, it's been five years and I know the M F T E, actually, I think I, I helped implement that in 2017. But the T O D has been around for five years and there hasn't been a single project. I think that. You know, the proof is in the pudding that these incentives have not been strong enough to attract anyone. In regards to the tree grove retention, I think it's very, you know, parcel specific, obviously, if you have those tree roads or not. I think a lot of the, the parcels along the five twenty-two don't have that ability. The Pioneer Project, it's great that it goes towards parking, but again, it's not strong enough to have incentivized anybody. In regards to the M F T E, I did have a couple of. I guess, questions or concerns as I've seen, and, and I think a lot of the other panelists have more experience with M F Ts, but. On this one, it sounds like, I believe it's, it's for the life of the entire project, so there is no sunset on that. Whereas I think I've seen other covenants of, you know, 20 to 50 years, and I, I don't know if that has a huge difference in the underwriting of a project. But maybe some, some loosening there to allow for flexibility of future development that. You know, maybe, you know, changing the, the life of, of the M F T itself. And then there is still some confusion. I think it kind of goes along with the tier stuff with. It, it talks about how the M F T is only to the qualifying value of improvements, and I wasn't. Sure upon rereading that, whether that meant it's only applicable to the affordable units as. What's qualified for the value improvements, or if it's across the board for all of your resident, the residential units. I know it's not given on the land or commercial, because it's multi-family tax exemption, but it wasn't shown that, so it's hoping for some clarification.
Well, I wish I could provide you the clarification, but I can't. But that's certainly something we can look at and, and your comments are still very valid. Sarah?
Yeah, I was going to say, so I was just, I was just, as Jenkins was talking, I was just looking at the M F T. Program right up, and it looks like it's 12 years, right? And so. Yeah, and so I think like where I've used M F T E in other projects, it's been an incredibly. Useful tool to really get market rate developers to perform affordable housing. Even, you know, 12 years is temporary, right? But it's, it's not so temporary. And if you're really trying to increase the stock to meet an immediate need, it's, it's a pretty useful tool.
So, sorry, sorry, just my, my clarification. Yeah, the 12 years totally get eight or 12 years. I was talking about the requirement for the affordability. Part of it being for, for the life.
Right, for the inclusionary, and that's 50, I think, and that, that is a big deal, right?
Yeah.
That's, yeah. But I think the M F T, the M F T is great in combination with the. The inclusionary zoning, it's interesting to, I mean, I guess because there hasn't been a project in the T O D overlay zone. I'd be curious to see how it, how those two get layered. Or if it doesn't, and I do think that Jenkins' point about people not. Taking advantage of the overlay zone so far. You know, does definitely point to incentives need to be restructured or rethought and. The Pioneer Project is really interesting, but I don't think it goes quite far enough. You know, it's not quite enough. And I was also confused if. You know, if we're talking about it just applying to the bonus units that the projects have qualified for. Then does it get dispersed across multiple projects? Probably, but also maybe that's not really enough to make a dent in. Your parking requirement, or maybe that isn't really the incentive that developers are looking for. And the tree grove retention, I think, you know, it's, it is another thing that points to Kenmore's. Sort of dedication to preserving the natural environment and that being a real amenity in the city. But it's a little confusing too. So. Those are my, those are my thoughts.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, I just had a comment on tree grove retention, and I think it is very lot-specific and kind of area-specific. But I think seeing as we haven't had any T O D developments in the area, none of these incentives have been used, you know, maybe an idea. You know, in concert with or, or another incentive is green building. And whether that's, you know, you get bonus density or an expedited approval process, something that's also environmentally conscious. And maybe something that's more. You know, could be more successful, because I think the tree grove retention kind of gets to lot size. And if you're going for a higher density, do you have enough space to retain those tree groves and actually use that bonus would be the question. And then, you know, with the multi-family tax exemption, I think it's always something that you look for. And maybe it's just. It hasn't been used or these incentives hasn't been used because maybe there's, you know, we're talking about all of these. T O D standards that are in place now and maybe as a whole. It just doesn't make sense for feasibility of projects. And if we change some of these standards and get some more flexibility, that we would see these incentives being used.
All right. Well, we have about 15 minutes and we have three questions left. So I'm going to go through the next two fairly quickly. And then I want to spend a few minutes talking about extending the T O D to downtown. So. The next question, and initially we were talking about doing this in a roundtable format, but I think I'll just have people jump in. Are there other standards or amendments that would make the T O D more likely? We've talked about lots of different standards, but did we miss anything? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, Sarah has her.
Sarah has a hand up.
I do. So this is one thing that Juan, who just, he's having some difficulty actually with his setup, so he's a result, he hears. But he and I have talked about this and I definitely wanted to make sure I brought it up. You know, particularly because we've been focused so much on the parking ride and there's the heron rookery, and so we've been really. Sort of thinking a lot about the wetlands and, and their impact on development. Something that I'm really, I wanted to throw out there, because we talked about it a bit, is. Thinking about within the T O D overlay zone pooling like your green factor requirement or something like that, so that if you are. If you own a property or you're trying to develop a property where you have a lot of undevelopable area because it's wetland or it's, you know, it's. Difficult to develop or something like that, you could potentially. You know, basically opt into like, maybe, maybe you try to find, or you, you try to. Contribute into some sort of conservation credit or some sort of pooling of, of the. Conservation areas so that you could potentially sort of think about transfer of development rights or something like that. Or potentially not end up, maybe it's just a benefit because you contribute the area that's not developable back to the city. And therefore you have some kind of tax benefit because you're not paying taxes on the part that you can't actually develop, but. There seems to be both a real desire and need to preserve of the environmentally critical areas and. That could really be built into the code so that it benefits projects and benefits folks that are trying to get projects out of the ground by. You know, taking advantage of places where there's a real need to conserve and desire to conserve. Environmentally sensitive areas and then credit, you know, to sort of smear that credit around, so you can actually get more density where it's possible.
Iman?
Yes, thank you. I think one, one thing we struggled with through our, our design process was the, the time it took to get through. Commercial site plan review or design review process, and I think if you incentivize that. Create an expedited streamlined process for T O D projects. You, you may, you may, you may attract more T O D. I mean, it would be great to expedite that whenever possible. And I know it's all staff-related and project-related and the influx of projects. But some kind of maybe. Incentive as to have an expedited review process for T O D projects, that's one idea. Second idea is to offer as much flexibility as possible in your design standards in the T O D overlay area. For example, percent reductions or increases, whatever the criteria may be, offer as much flexibility as possible. And then I think something that Jenkins spoke to earlier was to bolster the, bolster, sorry, the M F T. Regulations and just make sure they're strongly incentivized so that developers can actually use them as, as often as possible. Because that's, that's a big dollar amount for 12 years to be saved by a developer. And so those are the few things that I would offer.
Jenkins?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to second Sarah, Iman's comments, and especially the expedited review. I think as a private developer, what, you know. Costs are real important, but also just the efficiency and velocity, right? How fast can we get through this? And city of Kenmore, I, I loved your guys' staff. I think it's been one of my best experiences in jurisdiction is working with your staff and. Their willingness to answer the phone and, and actually work with you to get through problems. So that's already wonderful, but if, if there is something in the T O D that does give you an ability to, not jump the line. But at least have an understanding that you will have a project approvable. I think that's, that's a huge incentive for anybody. And then the other concept, which I know kind of cuts against the brain of having affordable housing, but maybe if there can be some sort of. Cross-use where you are able to, if there's two different projects, for example, and one maybe. You know, we were talking to Widener Apartments, who was looking at doing the whole waterfront for a long time, but has, is no longer. I, I don't think that plan is in place, but you know, they didn't necessarily want affordable housing on the lakefront, but if that ever goes. To be able to transfer some of the affordable housing, you know, credits, use that in the T O D for other market rate projects. I like to have affordable mixed in with market rate. I think that's the goal. But if, if the ultimate goal is getting more development, maybe that's a flexibility that you can kind of transfer those affordability credits. To, to one side or one, one area.
Great. Okay, moving on to question seven, one more after this. Are there other factors besides regulations that affect T O D development? That we should be aware of? Jenkins? Oh, no. All right, it looks like we've covered all the bases. For this last question, I am going to do a round robin quickly. And the last question is, the planning commission is considering expanding the density. Allowances and the affordability requirements west to the downtown commercial area, the B R T will run along all of five two-two. So that also is an area close to transit. So reactions, what should be, be concerned about, any issues? And I'll just. Go down the line alphabetically and start with Iman.
Well. I think most jurisdictions start with a, a T O D. Program in their downtown core, and I think that's, to me, it's a no-brainer. It does need to be. You're talking about minimum maximum density standards. Yes, however, the maximum density standards should be. Re reconsidered the way we've been talking about them all evening. Maybe there's F A Rs or that relate to the height. Or, or other, other criteria instead of just an actual maximum density standard. So let's think about them. If we're going to bring them into the downtown, think about it in a new way that is not included in the zoning at this time.
Juan?
Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. Sorry for, for the tech issues. Yeah, I mean, as far as, as, as far as expanding towards other parts of the Kenmore region, I, I don't have any issues. I think it's, it's, it's a question of like the previous question, which is. the previous question, which is the, what are the factors that are, that are making development be more incentivized? And I think it's always in the form of having the right things that you guys are already doing, which is investing in the infrastructure that allows for development to be more ready and, and developers won't have to come out of pocket to pay some, some of the offsite costs that, that happens and in things like sidewalks and things like that. So whatever the, the city can apply in that, in that form will always be great. And also developers being, being scalable and having the ability to, to apply to finance mechanisms such as tech, tax credits and funds that can be geared towards affordable housing. So that, that's always going to be important to keep track of. So that's it.
Jenkins.
Yeah, I don't think I necessarily have any concerns with, with stretching it downtown. I will say, I don't know if there's been a chance to say, but I do, I am a huge point of making the TOD overlay a requirement rather than just an option because I don't, I think the option hasn't worked. Nobody's taken it up. So maybe in conjunction, if the planning commission and the city council is considering making it a requirement in the current overlay zone, then maybe the option then gets pushed over westward as kind of a transition.
Alan.
I, yes, it certainly expands, you know, the opportunities for affordable housing. And, but I think that that one of the scoring criteria for affordable housing or, you know, a hundred percent affordable housing is, is distance to high capacity transit. And going any more than I'd say a half a mile from, from the park and ride. You know, I, I think that would be the limit as far, you know, as, as far as how far west you would go.
Sarah.
Yeah. So I will say, I like Juan, I did want to just touch for one second on a question we didn't respond to because I was not apparently fast enough, but um, and then I will get back to that. But um, I would just say, like Juan said, other factors besides regulations, it's just financing, I think, like available to find, like there's, there, there are a bunch of different amenities and improvements. In addition to affordable housing subsidies that are really also, you know, limited and, and over prescribed. So in addition to need more subsidy for affordable housing, I also think if you're thinking about the, you know, the challenge of taking a place like Kenmore that has definitely, at least historically, a more suburban grid and trying to break that up and make it more walkable. There's just, there's a lot of a lot of infrastructure that needs to go down and that's expensive. And, and the way the code is written right now, um, you know, that, that cost is largely borne on the developer. I'm curious, you know, if, if there is, if there are grant funds available, which often, you know, things like this come up and they're available for cities or counties to apply for. You know, something like a matching program, which you might already have in some form, but like something that would basically incent or lessen the burden for some of the really important infrastructure improvements that are also a really important piece of making Kenmore more transit oriented, but also costly. And our costs that are currently borne by developers, I think that would really help too. Uh, but getting back to whether I'm worried about it expanding to downtown, I'm not worried about it. I do, what I like about having a really targeted overlay zone is it's a very, Kenmore's intention is very clear. So as you expand where this overlay or this required zoning goes into downtown, that makes a lot of sense. It just dilutes maybe a little bit where the city is trying to focus development. But do I have a problem with more development that is in the form of the TOD? Absolutely not. So.
And Kevin.
Yeah, I would say I'm in agreement with everybody on the panel that we don't see an issue. Expanding the minimum maximum densities towards the downtown area. I would just say, you know, I would look at kind of the issues that have been brought up today as far as the, the design standards and making sure that any issues, if you do really want higher density development in that downtown area that you take into account, make sure that the standards kind of incentivize that and make that feasible.
Okay, great. Well, we got through all of the eight questions. Great information. Thank you all so much. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chair Thompson, in case the planning commission has follow up questions.
Thank you very much. Is, is there any questions from the members? I think we're all mesmerized.
There was so much information.
I've got many pages of notes. Tracy, you got your hand up first.
I'm curious about when you talk about incentivizing developers, like what and, and, and talking about projects not being worthwhile without proper incentives. What, what, I'll just, I'll just be very direct. Like, what is the profit that a developer wants to make in order to make a development worthwhile for them to do? Just curious.
Just speak up, folks.
And everybody's laughing. I don't know why.
Yeah, I, I think every, I think every developer, as Jenkins speaking, I think every developer has kind of their own metrics and their own kind of stakeholders that have their own requirements, right? Some developers need their money, some investors need their money returned as soon as possible. Some developers for apartment buildings want to, want to build and get out of there, you know, sell it to the, to the next REIT or whatever that comes along. Other developers want to, want to build and maintain and hold it. And it's a long term investment. And so there's not a single, I know all developers are kind of clumped into one, but there really isn't a single metric of if this is the cost, this will work for me because everybody's got a very different strategy or game plan in place for their business. Is that too political of an answer? Is it? I know it's kind of vague, but it's, it's the truth of it. Like Sioux Development, we build and, and own and operate. We have our own property management. That's what we do here at Sioux Development. I know other developers that literally will build it and don't care what it's going to operate like, just they want something, right? So it just totally.
Are there any more comments for Tracy's question?
I, I was just going to say, and I'm obviously not a developer, so other folks on this panel are better suited for this question. But I would just say that, um, Kenmore is like a really interesting, lovely, attractive city that has a lot of amenity. But in general, when you're thinking about trying to incent developers into Kenmore to do work, probably they're looking not just at Kenmore, but at surrounding communities as well and trying to figure out where, you know, where they can best locate to get projects that, you know, are going to be both not so terrible to develop, but it's going to take forever. And there's not going to be a lot of extra complexity that's going to, you know, introduce more risk. But also, you know, Bothell is also a very interesting, interesting city that has a lot of similar amenity and transit. Um, you know, there are a lot of little communities that are, or smaller cities that are around Kenmore that that have, you know, a fair amount of amenity too. And so I think it's more, it's sort of a competitive thing. If, you know, if, if you're looking just at Kenmore, maybe that's one thing. And you're talking about how much profit a developer needs to make. But if, if a developer is looking to locate on the north side of like Washington, they might be looking at Kenmore and Bothell and Woodinville. And just trying to figure out, you know, where there's available profit, property, what kind of amenity is around that property? And how difficult will it be to develop and what kind of resources are available? And then that's that's, um, that's what, that's what we have. You know, that's, that's the kind of thing that's going on. So I, it's a little bit more nuanced, I think. But.
Are, is there any more questions from the council commission?
Ahmad, did you have a response to my question?
Yes, yes, please. I mean, the old adage, time is money. The faster a developer can get the project done, the more cost effective it's going to be. That's, you know, that's pretty basic. That's why I mentioned the expedited review process or whatever you can do to incentivize that. Another one is, you know, they want to maximize their land costs. They buy a property for a certain amount of dollars, say, per unit, and they want to achieve those units or even greater. So that's, you know, that's that's a component. They want to build more for less, obviously. That's the, the name of the game. But still have a beautiful project, one that's attractive, has lots of natural light, high ceilings. All those things are still important. But they want to build more for less. And then the demographic, we always use property managers to give us the right mix of units. Uh, because they, they deal with their, their projects that they manage all the time. So the right mix is important to them. Um, and the size of the units is important to them. So all those, I think those four factors are, are important to developers.
Thank you, Juan. Any last, Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank the panel for their insight into the parking issues. Particularly as a resident of Kenmore, well, I have to walk a mile and a half just to get to a bus route where I'm at. And for the TOD, so if they're going to be on a bus route, my concern is what are they easily able to get to that they want or need in their daily routine or their lifestyle? For instance, a movie theater. Where, where's the closest movie theater they can get to on a bus route? Hey, we're going to open up affordable housing on the TOD. What are they going to be able to do living there? What kind of quality of life are we offering easily? To make them not need a car or to help them not need a car? If that's what we're trying to encourage and eliminate parking. I, I appreciate you kind of raising a flag saying it's not entirely reasonable to expect them to be without cars at this point in time, the way that Kenmore is set up. So I just, I really appreciate that. And one of the questions that popped into my head was when you're talking about height restrictions, is it, and it sounds like it might be more feasible for you to include parking if you were able to go up. I think the water table is a very reasonable concern in that area. And by raising height limit restrictions, does it allow you to offer more parking more, more reasonably?
Any one like to comment on that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to comment on the, um, the parking reduction. Um, the, the, the raising the building and allowing more parking. Um, that's not something that we would try to do. We would try to add more units if you can raise the building. Because the goal is to add units for affordable housing. But one of the, so there's basically every year, there's about $200 million in bonds that are allocated for affordable housing. And is, is very competitive to get those bonds. And most of the projects, in fact, I, I think all of the projects in King County in the metro area are awarded the bonds where where the projects are basically within a quarter mile of a lot of services, a quarter mile from grocery store and from other services in walking distance. And that's, that's to ensure that whoever lives there, if they don't have a car, if they can't afford to have a car, they can easily get to the bank or the grocery store or the doctor or something by walking. And so that's, that's, that's kind of the, one of the primary criteria in, in determining who gets awarded those bond funds to develop affordable housing is, is just distance to services. And distance to transit. Transit is, is a big part of that.
Trace, Tracy. Oh, no.
Did Jenkins, I think, did Jenkins have a?
Yeah, a quick response to Derek. I think the question, you know, if you can go up to get more parking and, you know, Alan can reference the, you know, not trying to fit in more parking. But I think as a general rule is when you go down below grade, that's where the risk, you know, rises exponentially, regardless if the water table is high or not. Anytime you excavate down, it gets risky and more expensive, especially when we only have, what, five months of good weather in Seattle, right? So um, so that's, um, that's what opens up the costs is anytime you go one level below grade, two levels, now you're P four, you know, P three, P four. You, you're really opening yourself up to a lot of unnecessary risk and exposure. So.
Juan.
Yeah, just piggybacking of what, what I've heard here, but it's interesting that there, on the one hand, there's the high water level, um, high water level that precludes maybe underground parking. On the other hand, there's beautiful um, natural feature that the, that the city has in their hands and the opportunity to, to create things like interpretive walk pathways in there and, and figure out what to do with the not, quote unquote, non-developable, developable traditionally uh, areas. And then, and, and then how does everything tie to the Burke Gilman? Which is a huge amenity for not just you and, and the city of Kenmore, but the entire region as a whole. So uh, those opportunities and the new, and the new high capacity transit together will definitely make it very important location. And I think the location is, is right there. As, as any TOD would be, uh, so in, in that competitive environment. But I think having having the, the right investments at the right time, um, with the right amenities and, and infrastructure that it needs, uh, is kind of the key to success here. And I think it's, it's going to be great to look at in the future as, as it evolves.
I'm glad you brought up the Burke Gilman Trail. We're thinking of renaming it to the Brewery Row. Um, that we had, yes, we have a commissioner that's, that's brought that up already. Okay, Tracy, I, you're up again.
So this is a follow up question to Derek's. So I'm, I, I believe I heard during the discussion that having commercial spaces be a requirement of development can be a disincentive and a risk. And I'm also hearing that, and, and I know kind of experientially to be true, that we want people to be able to walk to amenities. And so I am wondering in your experience, how you fit those two pieces together and how we can you know, do urban planning such that we do have amenities near where people living, are living if they're not necessarily included in the same structure.
Well, there are a bunch of different ways you can start to get at that. Um, you know, there are, sorry, there are ways. There are ways to basically look at, you know, building ground floor that, that's convertible, right? Because it's the appropriate height for retail. I mean, there are a bunch of different ways you could potentially do that. You could also you know, you could take it, you could take the, most frequently what ends up happening, but in other codes that I've seen is that it's, it's it's optional or, but the requirement is that the construction would allow conversion. Right? And, um, that is an expensive way to build. So it's not, it's not, you know, the most economical, but it certainly does allow for flexibility. The other thing that can be done is to, you know, require active ground floor uses that are engaging to folks that are walking by, but are not necessarily a commercial requirement. So in places where there is not a super strong commercial market, but there's a requirement for active ground floor uses, there are lots of, you know, there are lots of uses in multifamily housing projects, for example, that are like the community gathering spaces and things like that, that can be down on the ground floor. That provide some activation in the same way that commercials would. But you know, they also, you know, there are opportunities potentially to work with your economic development department and sort of uh, you know, find, make it so that it's not speculative development, right? Because that's what's really tricky too.
Thank you.
Just a couple ideas.
Any further comments? Any further questions from the commissioners? Mario?
And thank you all for spending a good Tuesday with us. Really appreciated. And Sarah, you don't need to apologize for your little, she's a nice. And Sarah, you don't need to apologize for your little, she's a nice breath there, professional in two ways. I did have a question, and this is from Juan and anyone else who would also like to answer the one. It was really intriguing what you were mentioning about the the idea of shared parking access and uses, and that you mentioned some jurisdictions were doing that. Is that something that you see either in our region or in our state? Is this something that is unseen outside of the consent area? Because I'm thinking of like, what type of incentives are needed to put in place for that shared usage? Agreements? And just trying to think of like, what is the administrative pathway or even costs that would make it more difficult for folks to to buy onto?
Yeah, I'm I'm not going to be speaking necessarily to the details, but I can tell you that in places like Bothell and and there's been specific partnerships that share parking and it's, it's just the shared parking agreement between two property owners and setting the times of when that shared parking, the whole, the whole theory behind that is that there are uses that are compatible because, for example, there might be a school parking that's only used during the day. And then the weekends, another use like a hotel or something like that could take advantage of that. So that the the notion is to share, to share the 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 excess demand that's that's not being used with the with the other partner. But it's essentially an agreement. The agreement obviously can include a payment of whatever form, but that's up to the owners and 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 them to negotiate. But that's, that's kind of what what would be there at stake. And if anybody can speak to other specific examples, that's, that's the intent behind that.
Ahmad?
Yes, the shared parking agreements are are a, as mentioned, are a private civil matter that have to be agreed on by two private parties to share their sites across each other. However, the city zoning requirements need to, if that's the case, need to allow that and not have all onsite parking required for the project. So that's really the main thing that I think the city needs to focus on is allowing, allowing those to happen where you don't have to use everything onsite as your parking for your parking total count.
Derek?
Yeah, I actually do have experience of this and it works really well. We have a parking agreement. It's actually three way at our location up in Mount Vernon, where a cabinet shop occupies or uses the parking space Monday through Thursday, which is their hours of operation until 4:00 PM. And then the church across the street actually uses the parking on Sunday mornings until noon. None of that interferes with our normal operating hours, which is primarily all off of those hours. So it's a three way, three different business owners, two different property owners. And the city just required something in writing that kind of broke down who's using the lot during what hours. And we had to show our hours of operation that the bulk of that business didn't didn't overlap. And it works great. We've been doing it for three years. It's been fantastic.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the commission? Well, hearing that, I, on behalf of the commission, thank you very much for all your time and wisdom and answers that you gave us, that you gave us a lot to chew on and to think more about when we chomp on these policy issues before they go to the council. So please feel free, if you have any further ideas, to send an email to Lori or Debbie and they'll get it to us without any problem at all. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I too would like to say thank you very much for your participation from the staff perspective.
Bye bye. So could I ask Lori to just fill us in what you expect out of us on March 1st?
So actually, on March 1st, what I anticipate is that we would spend a little bit of time doing a debriefing on tonight's wonderful presentation. And then also, we'll be looking at the housing land use element and capital facilities element background information. So we'll, once we have this conversation, then we're in the position to talk about amendments to the TOD. But I think we'll not be in a position to bring those forward and probably until April at the earliest. But the next meeting will be a chance for you to let us know what you heard, the things you thought were most critical, and then we'll go deeper into the conversation in a few meetings.
Okay, so would you really want some impressions that we have of what we heard tonight?
Right, or the things that really stood out to you, so we'll know where we should focus.
Of course. So is there anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, then I will adjourn this meeting for the planning commission on February, I believe it is February 15th, the day after Valentine's Day. I hope you all had a good Valentine's Day and look forward to seeing you on March 1st. Thank you very much for all your time and staff, great job tonight. Those were good questions, Derek.
All right, just just one last. I just wanted to put out a thank you to Lori and Debbie for the work I saw last night that went way into the wee hours. I think you guys were still working on this on the 15th on the city meeting last night. So I don't know how much sleep you guys have had, but thank you very much for putting all this together.
Mike, do you want to say something? Okay, Nathan?
I'll second that one. I actually hopped on the city council meeting like an hour or two into it. I didn't realize what I was getting in for and I stayed for the whole duration. So I saw all of that as well. So yeah, thank you for last night. Thank you for tonight and thank you for all of the work you put in for us, so.
It's wonderful.
Happy to do it.
Great, okay, then we're done. See you in two weeks.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye.